I call to order the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority for May 14, 2019. May we have roll call for the City Council?
Councilmembers Ogajanian.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Garpedian.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
We would require a...
For the city, for the...
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority, please.
Agency members, Devine.
Here.
Garpedian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Parazian.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Chair Ogajanian.
President.
May we have your report?
Agenda for the May 14, 2019, joint public meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority was postponed on Thursday, May 9, 2019, on the Bolton Board outside City Hall. Before you, as Director of Community Services and Parks regarding fiscal year 2019-2020, proposed annual action plan for community development block grant, emergency solutions grant, and Home Investment Partnership Act programs. One A is a City Council resolution adopting an environmental negative declaration. B is a council motion approving fiscal year 2019-2020 annual action plan totaling $4,356,658, authorizing the submission to the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorizing City Manager to redirect excess canceled or unused program funds under $50,000 from one project to another with CDBG Advisory Committee approval. See as a Housing Authority motion approving the fiscal year 2019-2020 annual action plan totaling $4,356,658 and authorizing submissions to the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Chair Ogajanian, members of the Housing Authority. We will go directly to Maggie Kavarian, Senior Community Services Supervisor, who has a number of slides to cover with you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, members of the Housing Authority. I'm Maggie Kavarian, here to present the proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plan. This year, staff began plan development pretty early in the year with council direction on outreach and marketing. We handled our needs assessment to engage local area nonprofits by hosting our CDBG open house. We had our September 2018 meeting. It was a public hearing held at Pacific Park Community Center, and we identified program priorities. We based our funding allocation plan at $1.8 million, which was about $50,000 less than we currently have this year in the fiscal year 2018. We issued the request for proposals in November, and we worked with our marketing team to have staff work one-on-one with agencies and really do a lot of assisting and outreach. We held our public hearing just recently in March. Before that, we had our first CDBG Advisory Committee meeting in February, where they made, where the committee made recommendations on $1.8 million. We had an additional meeting in April because we received $79,000 in addition to the $1.8 million, where they continued to make more recommendations. And here we are today to review and approve the action plan. This is a fiscal year 1819-1920 comparison. As you can see, the CDBG entitlement from HUD hasn't changed too much. We received just a few thousand dollars more. With the emergency solutions grant, they received 6% more, about $10,000 more, since homeless services is a major priority for HUD this year. For the home entitlement, it went down about 7%, but it went, it went up very high in the current year at $1.3 million as opposed to 2017-18, which was at around $900,000. So overall, $3.2 million was allocated to the city of Glendale from HUD. So looking at the social services CDBG RFP results, we had $281,000 to allocate, almost $282,000. We had 16 community agencies submit their proposal. 13 were recommended for funding. Two had backed out, and one was not considered for funding. For the neighborhood capital improvement projects, we had five proposals submitted. We had four recommended for funding at $613,000. $590,000 went to city pre-designated funds for our Pacific Park Artificial Turf Multipurpose Field Project, and $240,000 of that is going to the Section 108 loan repayment for Essentia Access Center. Overall, $1.2 million in total CIP funds have been recommended. This is a pretty good summary and breakdown of the complete CDBG funding plan. So if you could see there, $1.8 million with the $79,314 in addition that came in, 20% of that goes to administration, staff, staff support, monitoring, financial monitoring, outreach. Social Services receives 15%, and we have 13 community agency projects funded or recommended for funding. And for capital improvement projects, 65% of that funding goes straight to capital improvement with four community projects funded and two city projects. So if you can see above, about 52% of that money is going to the community projects, where 48% is going to city-funded projects.
Ms. Devine.
There, I think I read in the staff report for social services, there is a cap of 15%. That's all we can dedicate to social services.
That's all, absolutely. Any money that's left over for program income goes back into the CIP pot. It's just built that way. So the proposal evaluation process, during the RFP, the city conducts one technical assistance workshop, which we held in November. Once our proposals are submitted, the staff prepares this analysis for strengths and weaknesses. We usually, and historically, agencies were only given one week to respond to the staff analysis, but because we had such an influx of new agencies, we dedicated two weeks of time. So staff was really diligent in getting those proposals read and completed, just to give newer agencies time to respond. So the responses were attached to the proposals, and the packets were forwarded to our CDBG Advisory Committee. Committee interviews were interviewing agencies deliberating in development, developing funding recommendations in February. That was an all-day meeting from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and they got through it. And the synopsis...
Ms. Ogajanian.
Let's go back to the... Once proposals are submitted, staff prepares analysis of strength, weakness, discrepancies of those who submitted application?
Yes. So what staff does, Councilmember Ogajanian, we review the proposals and we prep it for the CDBG Advisory Committee. And how we do that is we look for strengths and weaknesses. And the way we do that is we look at their implementation plan, their program priorities. Does it meet a need in the community implementation? All of that is considered when we're reviewing that. And we work with the agencies to get that information to us. So everything is the most, it's most up-to-date and accurate, so when the committee reviews it, they see the most accurate information and complete information.
But how we help these new organization when they come forward, they do not know how to do it, they are not familiar with the rules and regulations, what we do to help them to go through this process?
So we had two meetings to do that. The first meeting was the CDBG open house, and we explained it, kind of a bird's-eye view of it, of what CDBG is. The second meeting we held in November was the technical assistance or the workshop that we held, which was very technical and very detailed. Along with that, both myself and my colleague, Arminah Hunanyan, met one-on-one with each agency that wanted additional support. So they came into our offices, we reviewed the questionnaires, any questions that they had, anything that was outstanding, we were able to assist them. And we noticed that we had more of that this year than in years past. So we did really do, we made a very concerted effort to do that with the newer agencies, more phone calls, more back and forths.
Could you mention how many organization they came forward last year, and how many they came forward to get your help this year?
So last year, we had 15 proposals, this year 21 proposals.
And the money is divided?
Five brand-new agencies funded.
How many organization they received money last year, and how many they're, they're going to receive this coming year?
This year, we have 13 agen, I'm sorry, in fiscal year 1819, we have 13 agencies. This year, we're going to have 17 agencies.
Thank you.
I shouldn't say agencies, I take that back. Projects, because agencies overlap. There's usually more than, one agency can get CIP funding, more than ones, or even social services funding.
All right, thank you.
So the synopsis of the fiscal year 2019-20 funding recommendations is as follows. All our current social services programs were recommended for funding this year, and we have five new agencies that were funded. The Armenian Cultural Association, Hamas Kayin, with their intergenerational experiences program. The Armenian General Benevolent Union, AGBU, Gen Next program. Door of Hope After-School and Teen Mentoring Program. Family Promise of the Verdugos Housing Support for Homeless Families Program. And Home Enotment Shont Chapter, We Got Skills Program was funded this year. All five are new. One proposal, one social services proposal was not recommended for funding, and one CIP proposal was not recommended for funding. We ask that the council please adopt the, approve and pass the resolution to adopt an environmental negative declaration and approve the fiscal year 2019-2020 CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plan. That concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Ms. Parbichan.
Yes, thank you. So there were two fundings that came in. First one was $1,008, and the second round, we had $79,000 more. We had another meeting, and who did this two, extra $79,000 go to?
So the $79,000 was, again, broken down, if we look here. 20% of that went to administration. About $11,000 and some change went to social services. And the way the committee decided for the social services programs was to give it to the newer agencies so they could have a head start in providing services. And I believe they had some extra leftover dollars to give and allocate to the Salvation Army, the ZONE program.
$79,000, 20% is almost $16,000.
20% is the administration.
Administration.
15% of that $79,000 is for social services, about $11,000 and some...
$11,000, social services, okay?
And for capital improvements, it's 65%, about $51,000. That went to Catholic charities and to the YWCA.
Okay, because I watched the, both meetings, actually, the first one first, and it was a great discussion with our commissioners. I want to thank them all for spending the time. The YMCA had a project, capital improvement project, and I think this was the first time they were applying?
It's actually not the first time. They've, they've applied for funding before. They have a history of $1.6 million in funding for CDBG historically.
So why is it that they did not get any funding?
Well, I mean, I can't answer...
Because the application was kind of...
I can't answer why they didn't get funding, but I can answer what their weaknesses were, if you'd like me to. Basically, their project work description was not clear or detailed in the proposal. They didn't leverage any funding. They required 100% funding for CDBG, from CDBG, to complete their project. Their building information was not clear, the square footage. The title of their proposal stated partial roof repair. When the individuals came up during the interview, they said, no, it's a total roof repair. So they couldn't, they weren't sure if it was partial or total, and that made the committee question, even the title. They need to include quotes or estimates for that project. They didn't include any. And then when we did the weaknesses, when staff met with them, they submitted what we asked them to submit, but then the estimates didn't come through. So the committee on, in the February meeting, February 22nd meeting, had asked them and gave them ample opportunity to come back, and because we were meeting from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., to come back and provide that information. They couldn't come back, but they emailed us, so we read it into the notes. So it's in, it's in, it's on record that we read the email that they sent us. And they based their recommendations on that information.
So what, what, did they email you the estimate?
Yes, they emailed it to us, and we let, we read that into the record.
How much was their estimates? Do you remember?
I'd have to go back and check. I'd have to go back and check. They also were provided an opportunity, as were all the other agencies, to come back in April, because we had $51,000 to allocate or recommend, and no one attended on their behalf. So they had another opportunity to come in and, and attend.
So they, they did not come back in April at all, they...
They didn't come back for the second round, which was, we had our February 22nd meeting with the original $1.8 million and then the $79,000 meeting, and they didn't attend the second meeting, where all the agencies were encouraged to come, actually, and fill out a comment card and speak on behalf of their agency and their projects that were important to them.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding that at that April meeting, they, there was some kind of a timing issue, and they asked to be, to be taken last, so that someone would actually make it to the meeting, and they were basically just flat-out denied. They were told, no.
I wouldn't say flat-out denied. It was a very, when you're dealing with 21 proposals, that's a lot of scheduling. And what we do is we schedule CIP in one group, because they have to make their recommendations just on that. And then we do the second half, which is the social services. And this year, social services was huge. We had so many proposals turned in. So it would be very difficult for the committee to complete their recommendations in a timely manner if the CIP proposal came in at 5:00, when all the social services agencies were already scheduled and confirmed. But we do give ample opportunity and time. We let everyone know weeks in advance that all of these things are coming. Even at the technical support meeting, we give them tentative dates that tentatively, you know, hold this date. Historically, Friday, February 22nd, 23rd has always been kind of set in stone, so nothing is really deviating from the plan.
Well, I, I, I think the two entities that received extra CIP funds, they, they could live with the funding in, in February, basically, when we had $1.8 million, and it was distributed according to the commission's recommendation. And after that, of course, everybody wants more funding, as we don't have enough to even serve 5% of the need. I don't know if there is a way of maybe looking into this issue or not for, for YMCA, well, I mean YMCA, because they're one of the entities that do a tremendous amount of work in our community, and if they, if they have a need, I don't know how much funding they got, or when was it, I, you mentioned 1.5, but when was it the last time they, they applied? I think if there is a way of looking into this issue today, is it, is it a possibility, is not a possibility, to give them another round of, maybe a chance to, to, to get some funding for, for their project or not? This is a technical question for, for our staff and our city attorney.
At the end of the day, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Housing Authority Chair Ogajanian, members of the Housing Authority, it is at the pleasure of the legislative body to give us direction on the recommendations that have been set forward today, based on recommendation that came from the CDBG Committee. If the direction is to possibly look to see what the request from the YMCA was, based on the project that they submitted forward, and I don't know what that dollar amount is, and to allocate that dollar amount to the YMCA, that would mean that we would have to take that money from, from another project that has been approved and allocated to the YMCA, and, and that is absolutely within the purview of, of this body to ultimately make that decision.
So the...
Just, just so the council knows, it's $64,000 that they...
And you mentioned that usually most projects, they leverage, so they don't ask for the entire thing. What is the, the percentage of the CIP that they, they require, they're, they're...
Every project is different. Every project is different. And I don't want to keep, you know, telling you every weakness that they had. One of the weaknesses they also had was, for instance, they had a pre-funding that's not allowed, unallowed costs, pre-construction costs. They included that in their budget as well. So there was a lot of red flags going on with that particular proposal. Again, just like the city manager said, it's $64,000. It takes away from two to three other projects that need funding as well and do good work.
I mean, two of the projects were funded in, in February, and this is the 51,000 CIP, 51,000 out of 79 was extra money that we gave them, which I'm okay with that. I, I'm not, I'm not trying to take anything away from anybody, but I think since we had that extra money, and these two projects were able to manage with the February budget, maybe we should look into...
Well, if, if you look at Exhibit 2, the YMCA project really didn't get more than about 40 or 50%, I mean, if you look, their recommendation was $219,000, but they had asked for $468,000 in Exhibit 2.
Exhibit 2, page 2.
Exhibit 2, page 2. If you look at the YMCA of Glendale, their recommendation is $219,400. The difference is $249,71. They, they really didn't get funded totally or completely. Same with Catholic charities, they weren't funded completely. All of them got partial funding, Home Enotment, ARA, Chapter, both projects were not funded completely wholly.
Yeah, no project can be funded completely, because our total budget of capital improvement is how much?
$613,000, yeah.
And YMCA's ask was, I mean, requested funding was 468. I mean, that's almost 75% of our entire budget. So I understand that. I understand that the funds are very small compared to the need, and I'm just trying to find, if there's support for it, if there's no support for it, I have no issues. I, I think YMCA deserves a little bit of funding, not the entire thing, maybe, portion of it, 50%, 60%, 40%, whatever that number is, that, if there is support for it. Because, again, that $51,000 that was funded in, in, in April, it was extra funding that came in. So a portion of that goes to YMCA, I don't think it's going to hurt the other two projects.
Ms. Devine.
I'd like to hear from the, if we could, from the chair...
Absolutely.
...of the CDBG, and a little bit about the discussion on this item and how that came about, this decision.
Councilmember Devine, today in our audience, we have the Chair of the CDBG Advisory Committee, Ronnie Garibian, the Vice Chair, Arminh Avadishan, and our Committee Member, Lila Ramirez. All three are here, and they can speak to their decision-making process.
Thank you.
Mayor Najarian, Chair Ogajanian, Councilmember staff, on the Y, as you saw the video, there was a discrepancy on the request. So it was, among us was a, we didn't know which direction to go, what to fund for. Even the pictures were not what they submitted for, so we even questioned the pictures, that this is what you're asking for, and they couldn't tell because didn't match their request with the paperwork. So we did ask them to go and come back and do the corrections, and they did not come back with the corrections. And Mrs. Kavarian mentioned the email, that was after the meeting was over, days after, not during the meeting, so we already had to make that recommendation. As far as the February, when we came back, it was four total agencies. ARA told me that we drew requests, they said they don't want any more fundings. So we ended up with three, which one of them was Y. And because we couldn't fund Y because of our first meeting, no corrections were made, we ended up with two agencies anyway, so we split the money between the two.
Any other questions, Ms. Devine?
So which, which two withdrew and said they didn't want the...
ARA told me that they withdrew, they said they don't want any funding on the second round.
Oh, on the second round.
On the second round. They were okay with the first funding, so that helped us, because total four, ARA withdrew for requests, and Y, we still had the same issue, was not corrected in front of us. So then we ended up with two agencies left over, we split the two among them.
So the email that was sent on, on February was not sufficient enough?
That would be a question for the committee members, to be truthful. There were two emails sent, so they, they knew about the meeting in February, and they also knew about the upcoming meeting with the additional dollars in April. It's something to be mindful of.
Okay.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Commissioner Ramirez.
Good evening, Councilmembers, members of the Housing Authority. Ms. Beers, Mr. Hassakint, you saw the meeting.
I did.
Yeah.
And if you think we have heated discussions, believe me, you're, you're underestimating our commissioners. They're, they're really, it's, it takes a lot, and I really appreciate that. It was, it was a good discussion.
Well, in the, in the final analysis, we were told that you didn't have to be at the meeting to present your proposal, and that even though the YMCA was considered incomplete, that it was left to us to decide whether we wanted to do that. And so we did consider it. And you heard the discussion, so I just wanted to let you know that that's the reason we did consider it, because it's, once it's presented to us, that's what we do. And we did, and of course, you saw the meeting.
Was it a unanimous decision? I mean, do you vote on them that way?
It's a process that you can't bifurcate. It's not allowed, so you have to vote for the whole package. And if you have the vote in front of you, I couldn't vote for the whole package. So you have a three, three yes, one no, and the reason was, I'm thinking the HUD priorities and the most need. And so I, I didn't think that it reflected the most need. So that's where I'm at, but that's a committee vote, was...
Were you supporting the YMCA project, then? Is that what you said?
I did, because I understood it to be that it's in portions, and that the way the proposal was presented, it wasn't clear, and we had a lot of discussion about that. In fact, we stopped, made phone calls, did all this good stuff, and...
Look, I, I, I'm not trying to, you know, sound like I'm trying to take sides. I just saw that there is $79,000 more money that came in, and after the vote was taken in, in February, and it was extra money, and I, I, I thought that Y, YMCA is worthy of getting some funding. And that's why I brought this up. That, that's it. It's just, I think if we can do it, it's a good thing. If not, you know, it's...
Well, they're all worthy.
No, I understand that. I understand that.
It's just a matter of need and most need.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garpedian, just mentioning the second round, the funds, nothing changed as far as us, as, as a commission, that the qualifications and recommendation of Y did not change from February to April. If the status would have changed, we would have considered definitely.
No, I understand.
But we weren't given any changes in the status. So that's why we couldn't say no the first round and say yes to the second round. That would have been a conflict, as why we missed it the first round. But we didn't have any update of changes of their...
And nothing against the commissioners. It's, again, this, I didn't see the April meeting, but I, I just saw in, in our staff report that there was extra funding, so I'm trying to see if there is a way of make a little bit of modifications, that's all, nothing else.
So it's a zero, it's a zero-sum gain at this point, is that if we want to give money to, to one group, we're going to have to take it away from the others?
That is correct.
Yeah, I mean, the funding pool is limited.
Mr. Mayor, this, something like this might set a precedent as well, if they didn't have all of their materials there and their paperwork done. I mean, I'm... all for the YM. I mean, I, I think they're great, and they do great. But if we allow them to receive, if we, you know, kind of change in the middle of the stream, it might set a precedent that we might regret, regret in the future, just saying.
Well, we've done it before, though.
Have we?
We've stirred the pot and reallocated, not without contention, though. I mean, it was a contentious meeting.
And I don't want to have a contentious meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Why did you bring it up? You're planning to see...
Because I know my colleagues won't go there, so...
Mr. Sinanian?
Ms. Carvian, if I can ask you one more time, so what made their application incomplete? Do you mind walking us through that again?
Sure.
Because I know applicants are given ample opportunity to rectify and mitigate whatever problems there are in the application, correct?
Councilmember Sinanian, members of the council, their project work description was not clear or detailed. They couldn't leverage any funding, they were dependent on $64,000 of funding. So that's something to also consider, if you were going to do this, because they, they're not going to be able to leverage. Their building information was not clear, their square footage areas of renovation cost. They included pre-constru-, uh, pre-constru-, bleh, pre-construction budget, and that's not allowed, that's a disallowed cost for HUD, so they can't include that. They didn't include their quotes or estimates for the roofing project. The title of the project was "Partial Roof Repair Project." When the individuals came up, they said, "No, it's a full roof repair." So that was, that's kind of what started it. And their project timeline was, was off. It showed a completion date of January 2019, which we knew that, that that's just more typos and whatnot. They were given two weeks to correct. The staff, the, the staff that was sent couldn't really answer those particular questions that the committee members had. They were given time to go back and respond, and we read that into the record.
And so, so they were given an opportunity to correct?
Yes.
And nothing came of it? They didn't do anything?
Well, they didn't even include the estimate when they were supposed to, once we submitted the strengths and weaknesses, and they had strengths, because they do serve low-income individuals. So when they emailed us the support, the supporting documents, it didn't include the estimates. So the committee members didn't even have access to that. So that was given during the meeting, which was all day, 8 to 6 meeting, with very little time in between to make those types of, we didn't have leeway for that.
I, I, I remember that roof issue from the meeting. They indicated that it was a roof repair, and then they said it's a replacement, but because their roofs have different sections, so if you look at it as a little section of the roof that is being replaced, compared to the entire roof, is a roof repair. So they're not replacing the entire roof. I remember that from, from the meeting, that's, that was the explanation, that because their roofs, that the entire roof has different sections, they're doing one section, they call that a repair, compared to the entire roof, but yet that section is being completely replaced. So I think this is just a way of, how do you word that, that work, that didn't work out? But I, I don't know, we'll see. This is, this is where I am, I think we, so they, they submitted their, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, they submitted their, their, their proposals during the meeting?
The proposals were submitted in January. We gave them two weeks to respond to the staff analysis report in showing their weaknesses. In those two weeks, they didn't give us the correct information. So whatever we had to give to the committee members was probably incomplete on their part.
And they never completed it?
They, they did the day of, because we were, they were asked...
The day of, February meeting?
At the February meeting, yes.
So for the April meeting, you had the information that you needed?
We had everything that we needed in the April meeting, and we encouraged... Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, no, we did not. I apologize. I apologize.
Did they attend the technical workshop?
They did not.
Okay, so that perhaps answers the questions here, as to why it was not a...
They had a representative at the public hearing after the recommendation was made.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions? Did we just do, did we deal with the social services as well? Question on "We Got Skills," I hope that's not a spelling class?
That's, that's how they spelled it. That's correct spelling on their question.
And this is Home, Inlet, Menon, and La Crisena, right? They're not, are they located in the city of Glendale?
They are, they're housed, their address is in La Crisena on Honolulu, which is a Glendale address, but their clientele are low-income youth that live in the Pacific Park area, that tract. So it is a low-income tract in the 91204, 91205 area. That's who they will be serving.
Oh, down, down here.
Yes, they will be held at Pacific Park Community Center.
Okay, so, thank you very much for going through that with us. This is what the recommendations are by the CDBG Committee, and the presentation by Ms. Maggie Carvian. Anything else that we'd like to discuss? Otherwise, we've got two council motions, and a Housing Authority motion.
So I just want to find out from my colleagues, is there support for allocating some funding to...
Give us a, I mean, give us a proposal, we're going to have to take it away from other...
Yeah, look, that, that $79,000 that came in later, extra funding, $16,000 is administration. I mean, that's a big chunk. And $11,000 is social services. $51,000 is divided between two, two different entities for capital improvement funds. I think since they had $65,000 asked, if you fund maybe 50% of that, that's $30,000. All you're doing is taking $15,000 from each of the two entities that got extra funding of $25,000 each, but they still will get $10,000 more than what they got in, in February.
Mayor, I thought Maggie said that, that they needed the entire amount in order to do it.
They didn't include a leverage, they...
All or nothing.
They requested 64, like an all or nothing. So it would be, we would have to ask them if that was even feasible for them to do, or else they'd probably be giving funds back.
I mean, all, I, it's a tough situation. We all support the YMCA. They're going through a particularly difficult time now with the construction next to them at that hotel. But if it's not, I mean, we would be going beyond our scope by awarding them money when they haven't even given us the, the business plan that would show there's contributing funds to supplement that and to make it a full-funded project.
I, I can't speak on behalf of the other projects, but I can say that many of them hire architects, and they pre-plan, and they really get their ducks in a row, and that's what keeps the integrity of the, the system, in a sense, the, the CDBG program going. That's something to be mindful of and consider to the other agencies who did do their homework.
Right, I mean, the integrity of the, the process.
Yeah, but you can't compare a $450,000 project, you need an architect with a roof replacement of $40,000. I mean, you don't, I understand what you're saying, and I, I, I agree, and I appreciate that, but a $450,000 or $500,000 project, you need consultants to help you with, you know, get you through the process. But one, one last question, Mr. Mayor. The pre, pre-construction, you mentioned there's pre-development, pre-construction budget that they had in there that they could not have had, what, what was that amount?
Do you want to speak to that?
Good afternoon, councilmember, and councilmembers. The pre-implantation budget amounts are usually their architect fees or permit fees, which the agency pays. That rounds up around about $10,000 to $12,000, and the agencies are responsible for it. If the construction, we only pay, CDBG only pays for construction costs, and if, if the construction cost goes beyond that, CDBG will not be able to allocate that funding, and the agency is responsible to leverage it. Currently, with the small projects, we are having a difficult time, just a note on the side for the councilmembers to consider, due to the fact that the construction business is demanding right now, so we are having a hard time obtaining contractors to do Davis-Bacon projects, which is a CDBG project, and they have to do, they have to hire based on the current labor cost. Labor cost is about $70 an hour, so the construction dollar amounts are small. If they're small, we're not able to hire a contractor who will be willing to do our projects. Currently, we have five projects, and we are bidding minimum two to three times to obtain a contractor to do our CDBG projects. So to do a roof project with $30,000, I don't know if it will be feasible unless Y decides to leverage the funding. Which, based on their application, it was incomplete, and I did not see or recall that they had any leverage funds in their application. But if they commit to leverage their funds and pay the difference, I would assume that we could do the project.
And do they, do you know what the cost of the, the construction cost of the roof is for, for the Y?
Based on their application, no, because I do believe, based on our February meeting, we did request for a complete budget, and the budget was incomplete. And the estimates, we generally require two estimates from the contractors to be submitted with our application, so we could take a look at it and see if it's, if they're, you know, they could, if a contractor will be willing to do the project. And I did not get any estimates from this project. And based on the application, the application was incomplete, and that's where we, that's where we are today.
You know, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I really wanted to, to be helpful to the Y, but it seems like the flaws are just impossible to overcome, as things are right now. So I'm, I'm just, I'm willing to leave the recommendation the way it is.
Okay.
And encourage the Y to apply next year with a more complete application.
Right, and go to the technical workshop, and...
I tried.
You did.
We highly recommend the technical assistance. We've been out there, we've, we've been doing public meetings more often, we've been doing outreach, so we're available anytime any agency calls us, we'll be glad to give the technical assistance.
Thank you, thank you. As Ms. Mayor mentioned, they're, they're kind of hurting right now because of everything that goes on around that area, and that's why I was trying to be a little bit helpful. But anyways, nonetheless, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have before us a council motion, and a...
Move the council motions.
And a resolution, so...
And the resolution.
At one and two? One A, one A and B.
A and B.
Roll call, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Aragian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpeian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
I'll move for the authority.
Seconds.
Roll call. Roll call.
Authority members, Devine?
Yes.
Carpeian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Brazian?
Yes.
Shira Aragian?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
For the council, and for... Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So we are adjourned at 3:49 p.m.